Mic on. Okay. This is my first time running a meeting, this meeting I should say, I run meetings all the time, but this one where there's actual rules. So help me through it if I flub something up, stop me. I'm not going to bang the gavel because I'm not even really sure when to bang the gavel. I know Phil does it all the time, but I'm not really sure when to bang it, so. First step is roll call. I'm going to start to my left here. We have Jason Charlin, Lisa Buck, Krista Switzer, Judd McIntosh, Jeremy Chubbuck, John Beckett, David Thompson, and Michael Costello, all present. Second order is we have two, what do we phrase them as, not permanent members yet or associate members? I would like to move that we make them voting members for tonight.
I'll second that.
So move, all in favor?
The conversation Jeremy is in the process of going through some required training and become an actual voting member next time. If anybody, if I may, Mr. Jeremy.
You take, yeah, step in whenever.
I just want to make sure that Jeremy Chubbuck is in the audience last time, but not everybody has met him.
Oh, yeah.
Jeremy is a pending new member, been appointed by, included by the council, and would very much hope that he has been part of this group.
Thank you.
The next item of business is approval of the minutes, so February 17, 2016.
I forgot the agenda.
Oh, Susie, acceptance of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Next item is the approval of the minutes. I was not here. Are there any comments, questions, concerns?
So moved.
It's a motion, get a second?
Should I, we accept?
Second.
All approved, I wasn't here, I won't vote.
I wasn't here either.
Next item is a presentation on stormwater. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
To go, excited?
I'm as excited as you guys are.
Bless you.
My name is Belle Ryder, I'm the Assistant Town Manager for the town of Orano. I'm also one of the stormwater managers for our MS4 program. We'll talk a little bit about alphabet soup as we get through it. I'm going to try out the beginning of my presentation for seventh graders on you, so let me know if I need to give you a little bit more information or back it down a little bit, all right? So the rain cycle, the water cycle, everybody learns about it in school, you probably still remember it, and if you don't, you've at least seen it come back through when your kids have gone through school as well. So we get rain, it hits the ground, maybe goes through a river, a lake, seeps into the groundwater and makes it out into the ocean, it evaporates, goes back up to the clouds, we eventually get rain again. That's the ideal cycle, that's what we all hope happens. This term that I'll start using about stormwater, oh, sorry, is the stormwater is this rainwater that runs over our landscape, and of course in Maine we also have snow melt. Normally, rainwater, stormwater, et cetera, is not a big deal, except in urban areas when we have roofs, we've got driveways, parking lots, roads, these are things that you guys see and approve all the time. And all of those hard surfaces, the impervious surfaces, prevent this water from soaking into the ground or reaching the lakes and rivers naturally. When it soaks, when it flows across our hard surfaces, it has the potential to pick up pollutants. So things that you may not think about as pollutants and things that are really clearly bad for our water. Litter, clearly that's bad if it reaches our waterways. So if there's litter in the ditches, if you drive along the interstate right now, you can see that there's probably a garbage bag full of litter about every hundred feet. One of the things the town of Orano does, and I would highly encourage you guys to participate if you're available, is on May 21st, we're going to do our street and stream cleanup. It's a great morning, you get to meet a lot of neighbors, and also you will have the opportunity to pick up a lot of trash, and then we feed you afterwards. In the town of Orano, the things that we see a lot of are cigarettes and coffee cups. Another pretty obvious pollutant would be your chemicals, motor oil, you see a sheen on your river, that's obviously a pollutant, not good for the fish. Car wash soap, so it is allowed that you may wash your car in the driveway. We would ask that instead you might use a commercial car wash where they capture the water and recycle it, or you do it on a pervious surface that allows everything to soak in slowly and lets soil filter out the bad stuff. Paint, we've seen this before where people wash out their paintbrushes in the catch basins, your storm drains on the street, because they don't want to get it into their drains. But the problem is storm drains go straight to your water bodies. And then there's the other things that are natural pollutants that you might not necessarily think about, but they all affect aquatic life. So brass clippings, you don't want to see this situation where you've got a big pile of brass clippings next to a storm drain, you want to scoop those up, either compost them or dispose of them. Pet waste is a big thing, I don't know if you recall, but in Rockland Snow's Park, they were testing the effluent and they thought that it was pet waste, because there was a high concentration of dog poop in the park. Turns out that it was actually somebody's sewer system connected straight to the drain, but it could be pet waste. And fertilizer, particularly if you apply fertilizer right before it rains, has a tendency to actually wash off your lawn, you don't get the benefit from what you just put on your lawn, and the fish don't enjoy the nitrogen. So that's why we don't want this, these pollutants to make it to our streams. Orano has what's called an MS4 permit. This is required by the Clean Water Act, but it's regulated by the state. We have a five-year permit, and that MS4 is municipal separate storm sewer system, which means that our sewer, our storm sewer is separate from our house, our sanitary sewers, ideally, and that's, Orano has spent a lot of time and money making sure that they are as separate as we can, as we can get them.
Excuse me, I don't think I can give you the mic.
Sure. The MS4 permit goes on a five-year cycle, we are in our third five-year cycle, this is, will expire in 2018, and then we will get a new permit. The permit is required because Orano is an urbanized area. Kind of an unknown fact is that the urbanized area is determined by the census, so there's pieces of Milford that are urban, Ellsworth is not, neither is Augusta. So neither Ellsworth nor Augusta have an MS4 permit, this is something that is additional oversight and management that we have to take care with our stormwater. And a lot of documentation. So in order to comply with our MS4 permit, we create a document called a Stormwater Management Plan, and there are six minimum control measures that they require as part of that. Public education and outreach, that's when we stencil catch basins to let people know that they drain straight to the river. Public involvement and participation, that would be our street cleanup. We're also doing a poster competitions, so anybody who has kids in the school system will see something come home that says, please draw a poster to get the word out about our street cleanup. Illicit discharge detection and elimination, that's where we're trying to make sure that the water that is reaching our storm sewer system does not have any non-stormwater pollutants. Construction site stormwater runoff, this is actually something that you guys are involved in. When you approve a site development plan, you, that's over a certain size, they have to submit to you an erosion and sediment control plan. We take that erosion and sediment control plan and we make sure that they're following it. And one thing that you'll see frequently is in heavy rains, because there's a lot of exposed soil, you've get, you get a lot of brown runoff, and you want to make sure that brown runoff doesn't actually hit our streams, our storm sewer, our streets where it could reach our storm sewer. So they have to implement BMPs to prevent that. The post-construction stormwater management, you guys also require this in a, in an approval, and we have just a few developments right now that are required to submit these. This is a town-wide requirement, not just in the urban area, but we see these from the Grove, the Cotaden, or the UCU project, the Public Works Garage also has to submit that. And then the town of Orano does certain activities for pollution prevention and make sure that we're doing, maintaining good housekeeping. So while it is very nice that we sweep the streets for those who use the streets, we also, we actually sweep the streets to keep the sediment out of our storm sewer system. Although those of us who bike and run appreciate the fact that we're not sliding around on it. Other things that we do is we make sure that we have wash bays where the drain goes directly to the sanitary sewer, not out to the storm sewer. There's many other things, but that's, that's kind of an overview of our permit. As I mentioned, you guys have a lot of involvement in this, I'm not sure if you realized that or not. There are several town ordinances relating to stormwater, the non-stormwater discharge ordinance, that is one of our illicit discharge tools, and that says if it's not stormwater, with the exception of a few, of a list of a few things, then it can't go into our storm sewer system. The post-construction inspections, we just talked about that, and then the performance standards. And one of the things that our Stormwater Management Plan wants us to talk about is low-impact development. And we do not have a particular low-impact development standard, but we do have this language in our ordinances that essentially says you cannot increase the quantity or decrease the quality of the stormwater that runs off of the site after development. In order to get there, large developments have to employ low-impact development techniques. So this is a lot of verbiage, I'm not going to read it to you, but essentially what it's saying is that they're using engineered solutions in order to mimic the natural, either natural water flows or discharges that were there before. Some of the things that I think that you have probably seen are these bio-retention areas, whether it's in a parking lot or a pond or a rain garden. Essentially what it does is it collects the water that's flowing off of the parking lots or roofs or whatever impervious surface there is, and very slowly filters it into the, into the ground. It gives the water a place to go rather than rushing off into a stream. This is an example of an impervious, or not impervious, a pervious solution to what would normally be an impervious surface. You can see that there's, this is a brick layout, so there's gaps for the water to flow through. And then, I don't know why it has hit my Facebook page so hard, but I have seen a video of a concrete truck pouring out water into a pervious surface, maybe, maybe Facebook knows that I'm a stormwater geek, I guess, but anyway, this is another example of an engineered surface that looks essentially like a standard impervious parking lot, but allows the water to soak in rather than to flow and rush off. I do have one video that I would like to show you, I have to, I apologize, I didn't bring it up, but I don't, if you recall the September 30th storm that we had last fall, we had five inches of rain in a very, very short period. I want to show you a picture, or a video of the stormwater that was rushing under and over Penobscot Street. So some of the developments, some of the new developments that we had has increased the flow out of our catch basins. You can see that we actually have a lot of, these are all reports of potential illicit discharges. Oops, gone too far. We track them and make sure that we follow up. Well, that's kind of anticlimactic, isn't it? Let me show you some pictures instead. This is Johnny McBrook actually flowing out. This is not the four-foot culvert that was the other, that was the video that showed, the four-foot culvert was entirely, this is, was entirely submerged, the road was submerged, there was a ton of water. This is water that was running off of the avenue construction site. You can see that it's substantially brown, this is a natural pollutant, but it would choke a fish. This is the same, this is the same stream that is coming off of the avenue, and this is more, this is, this was the avenue's construction entrance, and then this was, if you're standing in the construction entrance, if you're back to the property, this would be off to the left. So you can see that the teeth that you guys put into your approval allows us to go out and first we want to inform our developers that we are indeed an MS4 community, and that there are increased requirements around erosion and sedimentation control, and that we take it very seriously in the town of Orano. And then when you approve that erosion and sediment control plan, that gives us teeth to go out and say to the developers, this is not acceptable and you need to improve your processes. I will be looking for a volunteer later to fill out a little survey about low-impact development, just to check a box for us on our, on our permit, and I will provide that to avenue and let you guys all fight about who gets to fill that out. Any questions? Have you guys had this presentation before?
No.
Great.
Couple of things that I might mention that I think most of the board will know and remember and so forth, but a good example of a rain garden is out in front of Penobscot Valley Dermatology. That was an explicit rain garden proposed in order to meet the standards of our ordinance. There are, of course, many examples of detention ponds and retention ponds and biofilters, Derrigo Pines has a number of biofilters, the avenue is incorporating different kinds of systems. They originally, as you will recall, proposed almost 100% pervious pavement as their primary tool, very ambitious. When the costs came in, apparently, the construction cost for pervious pavement came in, you will recall, they abandoned pervious pavement and came in with the, those Filterra systems, you know, those systems with the wells and the trees and the soil filter, soil media, and I think there's some 30 of those around the site to capture stormwater. They are, of course, something that requires maintenance, a good deal of maintenance, and they're required to do that, and they'll be monitored for that. It's always good to remind them because the people who got the approvals aren't necessarily the people who are managing the site long-term, and they might not know what it is or how to spell it until Belle or Rob or somebody tells them.
The Public Works Garage also has a lot of stormwater management features on that site, and we'll be doing a tour later on in the spring, there'll be an open house for that property, and Rob is very proud of his stormwater management BMPs, so if you happen to go out for the open house, make sure you ask him, he'll be delighted.
And I just think this final background, because worth, it's worth, it's good context for you because when you see this, you'll, I mean, some of you are very familiar with it, and others of you aren't. But up until 2007, 2010, in that period, which is about the first time our five, I think our second five-year permit, the first five-year permit was serious, but it wasn't...
It was training wheels.
Yeah, it was training wheels by comparison. The second five-year permit got real serious, and the third one got really serious. EPA even audited us on our performance. But up until then, it was universally the case that stormwater, stormwater is always known, or has been known ever since the enactment of the Clean Water Act in 19, early 1970s, that non-point source pollution, of which stormwater runoff is the primary example, is a problem. But for us, at the planning board levels, the issue of runoff was primarily one of flooding. And so our ordinance, Orano's ordinance, historically up until 2008, 2009, 2010, said only with respect to stormwater management, that you shall meet, you developers shall meet the following standard, that the rate and amount of runoff from a site after development shall not exceed the rate and amount of runoff prior to development for what's known as a 25-year storm. 25-year storm is a storm that has a 1 in 25 chance of happening in any given year. And the developers had to do, had to come up with ways to work that, engineers, and primarily it was detention ponds or retention ponds. And for, for large developments. It didn't talk about water quality, it talked about water quality in other places, but not so much related to stormwater. There was not that one-to-one relationship. When the law, when EPA started to enforce the non-point source sections of the stormwater, of the Clean Water Act, and the main DEP started enacting their own statutes around, around stormwater quality, and the university would have faced all of this the same, because the university itself is a separate MS4, an institutional MS4 inside of Orano. Then we had to start inserting language per our MS4 permit, directly dealing with quality. And so now if you look at the subdivision and site plan and review ordinances, you will see language that adds to the water quantity question, the water quality requirements. And, and central to that are erosion control, sedimentation control. Now, the engineers who do development plans will always, always, always have put in erosion control plans, and you'll see them usually right on the face of the plan. You know, here is two columns worth of stuff that you've got to do, everything from stabilizing the soil during construction to permanent grass cover or ground cover measures, you know, later on, to riprap, to reduce velocity of flows and all that stuff. I would bet not one in 10 site contractors or developers ever read it, ever. It is seen as boilerplate and never read.
I can tell you that recent experience tells us that even after a fairly hefty fine, when we were talking about the E and S plan, somebody said, well, what's this DNS thing that you keep talking about? And it was the contractor who had never actually either seen it or read it. They weren't the developer, they were the subcontractor. So as you guys go through your process, making sure that you emphasize the fact that we expect this process to be followed, and that they should indeed train their subcontractors on it, it's very helpful to us.
And the final thing I'll say, just to supplement what Belle did, and again, this shouldn't be, this is not new to most of you because we talked about it at length in the Conference of Plan, and Phil Ruck gave us, as you'll recall, an educational session on it, and we had the Poochaw Lake Association come talk to the Conference of Plan Committee. But the key problem in mainland lakes, the key issue in New England lakes, really, northeastern lakes, is phosphorus runoff. And we don't have a lot of development in the Poochaw Lake watershed, but when we do, we have to make particular, and our ordinance requires particular, particular attention to measures to control the entry of phosphorus into the lake, you know, into releasing. Once phosphorus gets into a flowing anything, a little rivulet, it's as good as in the lake, according to the DEP. If it hits soil, it is typically bound up. And so the key is to get stormwater into the soil before it reaches a ditch. Phosphorus is the fertilizer that is the limiting factor in most lakes and is the one thing that if added in, excess amounts will trigger algae blooms. And it turns out, as we learned from the Lake Association, who's been monitoring this for years, phosphorus levels in Poochaw Lake are well above the level that would normally trigger algae, algal blooms. And the only reason that Poochaw is not green, at least during most of August, during the hot periods, is that it is a mineralized lake. It has this dark tannic color to it that probably is associated with slow seepage over the eons from Caribou Bog, which is in that watershed. And that dark color makes the limiting factor not phosphorus, but sunlight. So sunlight cannot penetrate to the depths necessary to trigger the growth, and then the death cycle, the death-life cycle of algae and their plants that, that, you know, if you ever remember Cabessy Lake or China Lake, both which had enormous... you ever remember Cabessi Lake or China Lake, both which had enormous blooms that destroyed the property values and the tax bases of those communities, and required Chica, the lake in Rockland, Rockport, Chica something rather, is another one. They had to take very expensive measures to reverse that situation and rescue those lakes. So Puja Lake Association is very concerned about that future, the future of that lake. They've got this unusual protection.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have four amendments that the council is looking for us to recommend to them or not recommend to them.
Make recommendations to them.
Yes, make recommendations to them, hopefully. And so we just want to tackle these one at a time. I think what I'll do is I'll pass it off to you, Evan. Is that what you want to do with each one?
Sure, yes.
You'll give us a description, and then we'll open the public hearing for public comment, and then...
Yeah, and there'll be a public hearing on each, so you're actually going to have four. Yes, okay, that'd be fine. And the first hearing is that on...
The first one, want me to just read them off?
Yes.
And then pass it to you. So the first one is an ordinance amendment to the land use ordinance, section 18-31, definition, section 18-61, administration and enforcement, and section 18-131, home occupations to include standards for home office, home workshop, and home business, and an amendment to section 18-106E, schedule of uses to include these three categories.
Okay, thank you. Let me give you a little context. I think for some of you, this will be sort of newish stuff. For many of you, all of you who went through the conference of plan, this will be somewhat familiar. But as you know, the conference of plan, including volume two, the policies, the conference plan update was adopted in 2015 by the council, so it's official. What that does, among other things, is it set a 24-month clock ticking, and in that 24 months, the town is theoretically required to adopt such land use ordinance amendments as necessary to implement the conference of plan, to the extent that it does not, and to the extent, and if as a result of not doing that, there is something in our ordinance that conflicts with the policy of the conference of plan, and if somebody therefore challenges you in court, as happened in Down in Scarborough several years ago, then that part of the plan can be declared null and void by the courts. So we are endeavoring to try within 24 months, address as much, we probably won't get everything, but address as much as possible with respect to the land use ordinance from the conference of plan. So this is the very beginning of that, and the way we are, the way the council wanted to proceed is to start with small, discreet, relatively non-controversial, important, but through the process appeared to be relatively controversial items that don't reverberate through the ordinance. Almost everything you see here will probably be revisited again in some larger context, but they can also stand alone if nothing else ever was done, and they begin to implement some important elements of the plan. And there are probably a dozen of those, and these are the first four of them that the council isolated. They'll be looking tomorrow night at three more drafts, which if they want to send them on, they'll send them on to you for your next meeting. And then there'll be a few more after that. Now, what the test is, is, and so I'm telling you this because in your recommendation to the council, you may want to express your opinion about this, is whether or not the proposed amendment meets a test of consistency with the conference plan, because that's the test of whether the ordinance is going to be consistent with the plan. Is it consistent? Consistent doesn't mean equal to, identical to, or the same as. You and the council can decide that the conference of plan suggested specifically this, we think this part of it's good, but we really should have tweaked this part or that part, or it really shouldn't be five units per acre, it should be four and a half units. That's okay. The question is, first of all, is the amendment or the action in any way in conflict with what the conference of plan recommended? And more than that, is it at least promoting, advancing the town's land use ordinance toward what the conference of plan wants to achieve? Okay? Everybody knows that, and you're going to see this in spades when we get into some of the bigger issue things like student homes and, you know, the contract, that it's not always possible to fully implement what was envisioned at the time when you're talking about policy. And that's generally okay. If you can't get there, it's just, you've got to be headed in that direction and get close enough that you're no longer in conflict with or falling drastically short of what is being, was recommended and adopted in the plan. So the role of the planning board is to review these proposed amendments that have been referred to by the council and give them a recommendation, either to adopt it as proposed, adopt it but with some modifications reflecting certain concerns that you have raised. You could say, this just doesn't work, you should go back and rework it. That could be your recommendation. Or you could say, listen, we need more time. We'd like, we, you could table an item tonight, for example, and say, let's bring it up again at the next meeting so that we can think about it and ask more que, you can ask me to go get some more information that you could consider, okay? So don't feel under the gun. If you feel comfortable passing it on, this would be a good time to do it tonight. If you don't feel comfortable passing it on yet, you want one more bite at it, you should take that time. You are the council's advisors in that regard. So any questions about that? Okay. Home occupations. You'll know that in the conference of plan, there was a fair amount of talk about streamlining home occupations to the extent that they could to encourage small enterprise and to take some burden off the planning board, frankly, which often reviews home occupations that have, that are invisible to the outside world, and it seems, it seems unnecessarily burdensome for you and for the applicant. That's not always the case, but it is sometimes the case. So the proposal here has, in the packets, and hopefully you had a chance to read the plan, is to divide home occupations into at least three categories, three subsets. And this is not atypical of what other towns have done in Maine and elsewhere, to have something called a home office, something called a home workshop. And in both those cases, both those cases are activities inside the home that don't typically involve outside traffic. And that's the key element. And then all other home occupations, with one exception I'll talk about in a second, would be simply called a home business. A home business is something that, and I'll read the definition just as we've written it, is any other home occupation that is not a home office or a home workshop, or that would otherwise be a home office or a home workshop but does not meet the limitations set forth in the ordinance governing home offices and home workshops, but would otherwise comply with all standards. So it may be that, that there's something about that home workshop that would be generating noise or doing something that is above and beyond what we're calling, defining as a home workshop here, but as a home occupation. Nevertheless, so that would be a home business. Anything involving new construction, if you're adding a room for the home occupation or adding an accessory building to house that home occupation, then it would have to come in for review. The essence is that the home office and a home workshop would simply be able to happen upon coming to the code enforcement office and getting, I'm calling it registration here, it might actually be a permit, might be the form of registration without a fee, but it would be a registration so that it's on record that there's something there, but otherwise there's no, there's no review, not coming to the planning board, it's just done. If you are a home business or doing something involved with new construction, then you would continue to come to the planning board just as you do today. And, and they would be allowed, you know, everywhere, and so the chart reflects that. You'll see the chart at the end of this where, you know, under home, next to home occupation, that whole line is crossed out, and now you've got the subsets, and the P means permitted with a permit. And the S means come into the planning board. And that would be, you know, allowed throughout the town. So this is intended to make the idea of home businesses, home workshops, home offices more friendly in Orno, or Orno more friendly to those things. Now, a couple of things. You'll see in yellow here something called home stays. That's just a placeholder right now because tomorrow night, the council is going to be looking at, at the group of activities called, that are part of travelers accommodations, hotels. Right now in Orno, we have hotels and motels, which are just exactly what you think they are, and bed and breakfasts, which are defined as a type of home occupation. But they're defined in a way that is, that hasn't kept up with the trends in the United States and the world. You know, the phenomenon of Airbnb is here, and here in Orno, if you look up Airbnb, you'll find a half a dozen units that are on, registered and offered up as, they don't call them home stays, but they are essentially home stays, and the industry is this thing called home stays, which we'll talk about later. But if they're, if the council is friendly to that and you recommend it and they agree and adopt it, there will be something called home stays, and those home stays will also be home occupations. That's why there's a placeholder. The other caveat I want to give you is that the conference of plan recommends that, to the extent that a home occupation, i.e. a home business, still has to come before you, it would not come to you under the site plan review ordinance, which is, has standards that have almost nothing to do with most home occupations. Rather, it would come to you as a conditional use. Remember, a conditional use is going to be a new tool in the ordinance that, where somebody would come to the planning board and demonstrate that they can fit into the neighborhood without disruption, basically. And so everything you see in this chart, wherever you see an S, that'll get, that'll become a C if there's conditional uses because that'd become conditional uses. Okay? So finally, the other changes in this, in this standard are that, are changes to a couple of standards, namely that explicitly home occupations will now be allowed within accessory structures. That goes on anyways, but it's not explicitly allowed. Secondly, whatever the home occupation is, whatever kind it is, however many there are, they individually and cumulatively, and whether they're in an accessory building or the principal structure, they individually and cumulatively, according to this proposed standard, could not occupy more than 25% of the total floor area of the principal structure. So there needs to be a limit. We've got a couple of situations where there's some abuse of that standard, of the idea that it's got to be, home occupation is meant to be accessory to the primary residential use and be incidental to it, not displace it. You know, and when you have a 5,000-square-foot home occupation, a 1,000, 1,500-square-foot home, then you got to say, hmm, maybe this is really a commercial use, it's a second use on the property. So the 25% standard is very typical of home occupation standards in land use ordinances. And I think that that is primarily at, home businesses, those things that still have, that generate traffic, there are some separation of standards for signage, you know, two square feet versus four square feet, and traffic generation, if it's going, if you're going to be generating traffic, it's still not open invitation to have 100 cars a day coming to your home. That's not the point. You know, some ordinances simply don't allow retail activity as a home occupation. You couldn't have a food thing where there's people coming to buy their, buy your goods from your home. You couldn't have a beauty salon where people are coming for service. Our ordinance has never prohibited that, but it's intended to be very small, very limited, and so we've actually incorporated a standard here in terms of the amount of traffic that would be considered over the limit. So those are the changes to implement this part of the ordinance dealing, of the conference plan dealing with home occupations. So I think there is no particular expertise one way or the other that has to do with a lot of this stuff. A lot of this stuff has to do with you as planning board members and as citizens asking yourself things like, if this were in my neighborhood, or if I were going to be a businessperson doing this sort of thing, or if I were talking to a neighbor who was upset about X, Y, or Z, would this make sense? Is it defensible? Does it raise worries? Is it indeed consistent with what was intended in the conference of plan, which several of you had a strong hand in? Those sorts of things. So, you know, feel free to be critical reviewers of any of this stuff and offer comments, suggestions, or feel free to tell yourselves that this is pretty good and you can move, move ahead with it as it is.
For clarification, anything that's already would be in violation of something we're approving their grandfathered in? You had mentioned the 2575 rule, more than 25% of the...
Yes, anything, anything that legally existed that was in excess of a standard that is new as a result of this would continue to be allowed as a grandfathered.
I've noticed in other areas, you're limited to the number of yard sales you live, so if you had a yard sale every week, every week of the summer, then you're running a business. Is that...
A yard sale would not be a home occupation at all because a home occupation must be carried out wholly within your structure.
Okay.
So there are a lot of things that you couldn't do as a home occupation in any case. You couldn't have an auto mechanic thing where the work was being done out in the driveway, for example. So in a lot of ways, home occupations already are fairly limited. You can't have outdoor storage, you can't have, it can't be work that's being done, you know, carried out outside of a fully enclosed structure. You can't have more than two employees outside of the family working there. You obviously have to maintain residential appearance. There is, as you know, a list of, what, 12 or 13 standards that define what home occupations can and can't do already, and those aren't being changed for the most part, except with some tweaking here. Good question, though. So that's my presentation. Mr. Chairman?
Would the next thing be to open the public hearing?
Yes.
Public hearing is open. Is there anyone who'd like to comment? Is there any internal discussion? Should I close the public hearing now and then we talk?
Typically, Phil keeps it open until there's some conversation.
Okay.
That will change things here.
The only thing that I noticed was the four square feet, right now it's two square feet is our, is our ordinance. Four square, well, I don't think I have a concern with four square feet per se, but how do we come up with four square feet? Did we just think that...
Do we just think that it's twice as big? That's good, or?
Yeah, it makes it a little more visible. Yeah, the thought, the thought was that if it's an operation that involves people coming to it, then you don't want somebody missing it and driving up and down the street because they can't see it.
That could be worse than, yeah.
Yeah, so the four square feet, given that it has to come to the board for review and location and everything, because a home business would, then I, I thought that was probably relatively safe. It's nothing magical about it.
Evan, are we supposed to be considering this home stays issue now or no?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
Any other comments, concerns, questions?
I read through it a couple of times, and I think it's pretty, very consistent with what we came up with in our comprehensive plan. The discussions we had, the wording, it, I thought it was very consistent.
Agree.
I'm very comfortable with it.
All right, so close the public hearing? Do a motion. Public hearing is closed. Can I get a motion?
A move that we recommend to the town council, they adopt it as presented.
I second.
Let's take a vote. All in favor? unanimous. All right. Next item is an ordinance amendment to the land use ordinance, section 18-31, definitions in sections, section 18-140, signs defining and allowing light pole signs in certain locations. This was a whole new education for me.
Well, it's one of those, oops, yes, this is one of those things that comes up. And as I mentioned in my memo to you, the whole sign ordinance needs to be overhauled. They're, it is out of date with current technology. For example, our current ordinance doesn't talk about digital signs at all. And Bill gets requests relating to digital signs, and he doesn't quite know how to deal with them. They're not regulated in the sense that, are they going to be, you know, flashing, you know, fast-moving digital signs that will drive drivers crazy, et cetera? There has been law court cases dealing with freedom of speech that, that has funny reverberations through the sign ordinance about what you can regulate and what you can't, and so forth. So I've, I've started rewriting the whole sign ordinance, but that takes, it, it, it's like opening up an old house and, and, but meanwhile, we, we, two things. We, as a town, use light pole signs regularly out on Main Street, probably in violation of the sign ordinance. So there's an ambiguity, a contradiction there. And secondly, with the development of the urban plaza outside University Credit Union, the credit union is all set up to have light pole signs but can't have them, because they're not allowed by the ordinance. There isn't anything called light pole signs. And, and they, so they made a formal request to council, because they would like to utilize them. And since then, there's been at least one other plaza built that could potentially have such signs. Anyways, so that's why, that's why this council wanted to move ahead with this now. And so, light pole signs are defined, as you see in the, in the draft. And you can see the picture. That picture says a thousand words, and that's really what a light pole sign is. Importantly, a light pole sign that's owned, installed by the town is exempt from regulation, just as other government signs are. So that's just another, another type of government sign. But other than that, light pole signs would be allowed, but only in very limited circumstance. This is a very narrow amendment, and so one question is, does it have to be so narrow? You know, what you, what you, what you think about when you open up the world to all kinds of signage is the blizzard of signs that become a form of visual clutter. And as opposed to an amenity that brightens up a place or that conveys information that may be certainly perfectly good, appropriate to convey. So in addition to light pole sign, the idea here was to allow light pole signs only in certain places, i.e. urban plazas located in the, a commercial zoning district. That's it. And so we had to define urban plaza, what's an urban plaza, and distinguish it from parking lots and, and the simple yards of businesses along the highway. And, and so we've done that. And the definition of an urban plaza, you know, an urban plaza has certain characteristics. It was not hard to define an urban plaza. Has certain characteristics. Most importantly, it has frontage along a public sidewalk or a public parking lot, and is connected, is connected directly to a primary entrance. That's a, that is part of the urban plaza form. It's what makes an urban plaza an urban plaza. And it provides for pedestrians to go between that street or parking lot and that primary entrance. And it does not have, it is not itself used for parking. And it is of a dimension and size and shape that, you know, can be used for milling about and seating and that sort of thing. So, that's what an urban plaza is. So this amendment would simply allow light pole signs at the rate of one sign per 1,000 square feet of plaza area inside of urban plazas. Now, in the case of the University Credit Union, they have two pla, there are actually two plazas designed into that. One is the big one out front, which I think is 3,000 or 4,000 square feet in size. So they'll be able to have three or four of these light pole signs. But behind, their, their primary entrance coming in from the, that separates the parking lot from the main entrance, is itself 1,000, 1,200 square feet. And so they could probably have one there too, if they want to. The other example in town now is the family dog, which has the green out front, which would qualify as an urban plaza if they chose to use it in that way. And there may be others in time. So, one per sign, maximum square footage of 15 square feet. Typically, it'd be two and a half by six or something like that. It has to be a sturdy canvas kind of material that can withstand weather conditions, has to be affixed, it can't be flapping about. You know, it's not one of these feather signs, and it's not, it's affixed to arms off the light pole. It can only be illuminated by the light source that's on the pole itself. And it has to have clearance, so that people don't bump their heads. So I think this is a pretty narrow, if not simple amendment. You'll, you'll hate signs once we get to the sign, full sign ordinances. I hate them already. I mean, I hate the ordinance, I don't hate signs, I just hate writing the ordinance. That's it.
Thanks, Evan. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Discussion, questions?
Will we be allowed to discuss this?
Definitely.
For me being new. So I actually have a fair amount of experience with light pole signs.
Oh, man.
On the university.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I was surprised to find that it's a disallowed activity up to this point, because we have thousands and thousands of dollars worth of light pole signs that we've had for years and years. As a matter of fact, we're in the process of upgrading them now with new ones. And I've learned a lot throughout the years about light pole signs that you, despite the fact, I guess until this point, that we didn't realize that they were disallowed, hopefully they'll become allowed, but a light pole sign can't be put on any old light pole. The light pole has to be designed to accept the light pole sign. Otherwise, what happens is the manufacturer of the light pole will no longer warranty the safetiness, whatever the word is, of light pole. And so that may be a consideration. We want to make sure that whatever's installed on existing light poles, that the manufacturer is okay with their installation, or else we could be inheriting liability that unintentionally unknown. That's the first thing. The second thing I've learned is wind. Light pole signs do not like wind. So a 15 square foot light pole sign is a big sign. Anybody that's familiar with the banner that we assist the town with, and we put our own banners up in the university right out here, have probably seen them wrapped up before. And so that's a continuing challenge. So it should be a consideration, in my opinion.
What, what would you say the maximum size should be?
The ones that we have on the university are about two and a half feet wide by about three-ish feet long, three and a half feet long. And they're supported at the top and the bottom.
Yep.
And from my experience, we did about a year and a half to two years out of those in the open, the big open spaces.
Yep.
They're made out of vinyl, reinforced vinyl fabric. So 15 square feet is, is probably on the upper end, without running any numbers on it.
We had, we have some in the street that are roughly 15 square feet. That's how I came up with that size, and I went out and I actually looked at what was hanging in Main Street right of way. I don't know how durable they are or how they fare, so.
I've seen some to accommodate that, so they don't become a sail. And hold wind is, they actually have flaps where the air blows, flows through them.
Yep.
So it doesn't become, it doesn't cause stress on that pole. That's probably why they're talking about, it probably causes stress on the pole.
That's correct. The flaps, and also the type of grommets, like the one that we use out here have metal grommets that are folded over. And in the past, some have come without the grommets, and they'll rip the very first windstorm. But the flaps do open, but you need many of them. But that is, that should be a consideration in my opinion.
Jeremy, would you reduce the square footage?
I would recommend that we do, yes. I don't have an exact number, because I, you know, I didn't run any numbers, but 15 is fairly large.
Be a sail.
You'd be surprised how strong wind can be.
The ones that you measured, they're the town's signs?
They're in the town right of way, yeah. They're, they're ones that were being put up, that were put up, they may be, they may be ones that, at least one of them was simply the ones kind of talking about Orenal Home with the University of Maine, and they've been, they've been up from time to time for quite a while.
In a sheltered tight area, or?
Right along the road here.
But not on, say, the bridge downtown?
No. No. I mean, I, I think they could be smaller. The 15 square feet was, I was just two and a half by six, yeah. But this, you know more about this than I do, so it's very valuable. And I think I would defer to you, and I would certainly take the recommendation of reduce this to some degree.
I think the two, the two issues I brought up, the bigger concern would be making sure that the light pole manufacturer would still accept improvement to the light pole and still, you know, warranty the, the worthiness of the light pole. Those are issues that we face in council.
So it could be, not only manufacturing installed specifically for use on a light pole, but on a light pole that is okayed by the manufacturer for such installation.
Approved, yeah.
I wonder if the manufacturers actually limit the size of the, the flag that could go on there, because some, I'm sure somebody knows about the, the amount of force that could be generated by such and such a wind on such and such a square area. I mean, a sail, so, yeah, I'm sure, you know, that, they, they're worried about their own light.